This is the Black Powder Podcast coming at you live and direct. Your salty tears season my life. It's the Black Powder Podcast. Hello.
Hello.
This is the Black Powder Podcast, the only real libertarian podcast that has ever existed in humanity. And I am Marcus Matthews, the only real libertarian. And I want to start off with some breaking news, and this is critical to my life right here. And this may shock a lot of people. The state of California is no longer the fourth largest economy in the world. We are now the fifth. Now, I'm gonna give you guys a moment to pause.
Hold on, was your dad still a deacon?
We'll, we'll get to that part.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Your whole world is crumbling.
Alright, man. Look, okay.
Yeah, you're just a Californian. You just, you, you, there's nothing special about you. Nothing.
It's bad enough that we're the fifth largest economy in the world now. I don't need you, Tub, coming in here and further deflating my bubble with that horse malarkey. And that's the first horse malarkey of the night.
I, I was, I was going to text you earlier and see if Gaz, if Gavin Newsom has you selling your, or forcing it out of your house so he can build a high-rise next to you.
Not yet, but you know, I only think that's gonna improve property values, so.
Is, is it gonna, uh?
Nanner.
Is he gonna pay you market value?
Um.
Why would you, why would you want to i- i- improve property values? You guys' property values already out of control.
No, it's not. It's not for me, because.
Hold on, you, you live, you live in a one-room shack with a dirt floor. And how much is your house? Right.
Six hundred and fifty.
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you gotta sleep in the garage.
And the best part is I got it for one seventy-nine. Yeah, I got it for one seventy-nine, so do the math.
That's only retirement.
A boomer. I'm almost like a boomer when it came, I bought, uh.
Not almost.
Wow.
Yeah. Not almost.
I'm not with you, Tub. I'm not in the boomer generation, so.
You're older than me, Marcus. You are older than me. Yeah, maybe on paper. Boomer.
Well, maybe on paper.
So, let's see, so you're no longer the fourth largest economy.
No.
You, um, you, your dad was never really a deacon.
Yes, he was.
Is he still?
No, he still goes to church, though.
Well, at least somebody in your family does. At least somebody gets it right.
I already, I told him, I, um, already put in enough, uh, church credits for, uh, a pastor. Yes, I did. Uh, growing up, I, I went to church.
Hold on, Marcus. I gotta go. You're turning into the meme, Marcus. You're turning into the meme. Marcus, you, you told him, I'd already spent too much time with Tub. I don't. Trust me, that doesn't count. That's, that's, that's prepping you for hell, not getting you into heaven, huh?
No. I, I already have a, uh, placard and a parking spot in heaven. Yeah, 'cause I, I assume.
That's horrible theology, which proves to me that you don't get it. Oh, my.
My heaven has interstates.
Don't, 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 don't we have a guest?
Yeah, yes. And not only do we have a guest, we are continuing our libertarian local candidate series, which is critical at this timeframe, because libertarians have a, well, we've always had an uphill battle trying to defeat the duopoly. But, you know, right now, we're getting a little bit of bad press with Argentina. But what I want to tell the people that are doubting libertarians right now is what this grassroots movement that the Black Powder Podcast is doing, um, with my boy Eric, we forgot to introduce Eric Parker and say, okay, back to me, so.
There it goes. As, listen, to live in your world for a day.
It, it would be amazing for all of you guys to be in the fifth largest economy.
Technically, we all are. Yeah, technically, technically, we all are living in your world. Because. Using your IP address.
Yeah.
Whatever. They're coming to kick your door in.
Planet here already knows what's up with me. It's, it's a done deal. But, uh, yeah, uh, we're, we're trying to, uh, do this grassroots movement of getting local libertarians, uh, exposure and elected, because that's where we have to start. We have to start local, talk to the people where they are, and not do all this grandstanding like the big podcasts do. We're, we're gonna be a big podcast, but we need to be able to go to the people and show them what's going on in their community, and why they should give libertarians a chance. And with that being said, we're gonna bring in our guest tonight, Mr. Jason Stoops from Wilmington, Ohio. How are you doing, my good man?
Good, Marcus. How you doing?
I'm just happy to be here, minus Tub, but at any rate, I want to say this, uh, thank you for.
I, can I say it now, Mr. Stoops, before you get started? I hate this podcast.
So, we're, we're gonna get this started by handing you the mic and telling us who you are, what you do, why you're doing it. And also, you know, one of them other guys can ask you a question about you, why you're a libertarian, or whatever, however they want to phrase it.
That you don't understand libertarians? So you gotta let, you gotta, so here's what happens, and before you get into it, Mr. Stoops, I'll make it very clear. Marcus ain't like us, and, and because we, we get into the game, we got active in being a part of libertarianism.
You're talking about me being dark-skinned brother, or?
No, listen, I have a feeling that neither of us might be darker than you, but inside of that. What, what I'm saying is, w- w- we, we got active. Marcus hides in his garage behind a microphone while the rest of us go out and actually run for office and try to truly spread liberty. So Marcus probably shouldn't be the rest of this conversation, so if you could, over the next however long you need to, please basically just inform Marcus what it's like to be a candidate.
Alright. Born and raised in Wilmington, um, been an auto mechanic over thirty years.
We can't hear him.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
I can hear.
I can hear you.
It's Tub again.
Tub, you can't hear us?
I can't hear him. Well. I'm gonna dip it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reset it. Y'all, be blessed.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Continue on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Jason Stoops, born and raised Wilmington, Ohio, uh, been mechanic forever, thirty years. About ten years ago, about two thousand sixteen, seventeen, I don't recall exactly, we opened up our own garage. About two years into that, we had a chance to buy a, uh, dilapidated property in downtown Wilmington for a very good price to move the shop into eventually. When you buy into downtown property, whether you want to or not, you buy into politics. And at the time, downtown Wilmington was a, uh, it wasn't a wreck, but there were still sections that were needing love. And that's where I got the deal I got. So trying to work with the city and different issues with, and, and you're downtown, so you got homeless, you got pimps, drug deals, it's just all the fun stuff, even though we're all the fun city. And what you delve into is that there is no, uh, well, the ordinance is stuck in the town. Um, and everybody's hands tied, you know, government works, they just point everybody else, so it ended up involving, two years ago, um, I decided to run for mayor, coming second. So no sooner after that was over, about three months after that, the new mayor sent us to this, uh, Tub back, a stop work order on my business, and that kinda pissed me off, so I decided to, uh, go at him and run for council. We're just gonna see what we can do from the inside of this one.
Gotcha. Uh, so, uh, not to make any, this anymore about me than I already have. Uh, the reason I got, decided to run for office when I did was because of what the government was doing, the small businesses, and Jacksonville, one that I work in. So, Tub, I'm still getting that echo. If you wanna mute your mic until you're ready to ask questions, please. Thank you. Uh, and I don't know if anyone else is seeing that. Uh, but yeah, so I just wanna say, I totally get where you're coming from, so I already love this story, and I'm glad you're running. You got real world experience, you can talk to the constituents about what local government can and will do to the taxpayers in your community, and you can speak from experience, so that's good. Uh, I just wanted to congratulate you on coming in second for the mayoral race. So can we kinda dive into that? Like, how much time did you spend when you ran for mayor? Uh, time and money and?
Money?
Yeah.
Yeah, the money was, actually, I spent under a thousand dollars. I didn't do campaign finance on that. I, I think nine hundred dollars or eight ninety-one is the exact amount. And what it come down to then, I don't wanna really get into the weeds too, but the small towns, you always have one person that runs for an office, and Wilmington, we'd always had one person run for mayor. And I was like, F it, I'm gonna run for mayor. I mean, it's eighty dollars to get on the ballot. And once you get into it, these people have a choice. So I got my stand first, got on the ballot and got to talk to some people, and I, it, it was fun. It was hard. Don't get me wrong, so I tell you, uh, no political party backing, so you're doing all this thing on your own. I've never done politics, so not a clue what I was doing, so you gotta learn on the fly on that. And this is a Republican-heavy town, so I'm on the outside anyways.
Gotcha.
It was fun.
Uh, it was that race and, uh, this coming up race, are they partisan or nonpartisan? Like, on the ballot, did it have a political party? I know, like.
No, they, uh, I guess it was Man and the Republican on the, uh.
Gotcha. But you get what I'm saying? Like, uh, on the ballot, did it say Republican next to his name and then Libertarian next to yours?
No, no, nothing on mine.
Gotcha.
That's gonna be a third party.
Oh, wow. See, that's kind of a kick in the pants right there. Like, if he gets extra, anyone showing up, they see Republican next to his name.
Automatic check.
Gonna go that way, and you have to convince everyone else, and then Republicans, hey, look, I'm a real candidate, you could trust me, so you gotta get out in front of them before voting and get your name out.
And trying to convince a Republican that you're not a Democrat or not a liberal. I mean, I have some liberal views, don't get me wrong, and I have some conservative views, but they automatically go to the extremes and just assume if you don't agree with one thing, oh, you're this or you're that. Like, hold on, we can, we can agree on some stuff here, let's talk about this.
Yeah. Uh, go ahead, Marcus.
So why are you a libertarian?
Um, it's just been back and forth forever. I don't know, I never was a fan of the big parties, they just, they flip back and forth. One says they're gonna do this, and you get the next party comes in, they do just the opposite, and they just go back and forth. Um, we're currently pushing and discussing Wilmington becoming a charter city for this very reason. We're a statutory city, so every four years, when we get a new mayor, they may not like what the old mayor did, so they just reverse this, reverse that. We spend a lot of money back and forth. So I, I've seen that a lot with the, uh, on the main government, just the dual party just doesn't work. You just can't be all Republican on every item, sorry. Or vice versa, or Democratic, so you just can't believe straight down the line.
Yeah.
I don't know why that's so controversial, 'cause that's, I think, I've, I've only heard two reasons why people choose to be a libertarian. One, the number one is, especially with the younger generation, is Ron Paul. And number two, it's the hypocrisy and BS.
Yes.
And I don't understand people that buy into the hypocrisy. I, I don't blame anyone for not wanting to vote for Kamala Harris at all, uh, this past election cycle, 'cause I, her, her voice was like nails on a chalkboard to me. But at the same time, you, we already did Trump, and that was, i- it wasn't good. And, you know.
You had no good choices.
No, none at all. And I thought, uh, this last, uh, presidential election cycle was a grand opportunity for the Libertarian Party to put forth a grand presentation of who and what we are. And that ball was fumbled harder than any ball. Herschel, Herschel Walker was known as a fumbler in the NFL. And the Libertarian Party beat that mantra tenfold. Fumbling the bag for my urban people, uh, fumble the ball for football fans, whoever, uh, turnover in basketball, whatever your era in baseball, whatever you wanna call it, the Libertarian Party made every effort to mess this up. And it's, it's just horrible that, that, that was the showing, and that's why we have to focus on the local, uh, more so now, because we have a lot of ground to make up, and tell, uh, I, I would ask you to tell people of Wilmington and to the American people that are gonna watch this, hopefully the LP National shares it and whatnot, 'cause they've been sharing our local. But what do you plan to do when you get on the city council?
Well, one thing I'm gonna push for is a just a nice, what I call a camping policy. And we've all seen, as you're Californian, so what I hear, you hear a lot worse than us, but we have some individuals that have mental health issues, and they'll just camp out on a sidewalk or wherever, and they're not hurting anybody, let's not get it wrong, but they're not with it enough to, uh, make their own decisions sometimes.
Yeah.
But you can't arrest them, 'cause they're not breaking any laws, and you can't call anybody, so they get, they get in the snow, they get in the cold, they get harassed. So with a proper policy, the police can at least talk to them and help direct them to services and get them off the streets. And again, they could, not, I'm not saying force, we're not forcing nobody, but leverage and show them, hey, you can go here, you can go there, and if, if you use this with a proper crisis response team, then you get the police off the call, and they can go do their cop stuff, and you have a person that is familiar, most likely familiar with the person for one, and they're familiar with the treatment centers and what they can do, and what this person needs to get off the street and get some help. So that's kind of my main push, I guess.
So, uh, for those of us not from Wilmington, Ohio, uh, can you kinda give us the layout of the city, where it is? Uh, its closest metropolitan center, that sort of thing?
Southwest Ohio. We can get to Cincinnati, Columbus, or Dayton within an hour, roughly, uh, three hours from Cleveland. So we're right, nice little hub right there. It's a mainly a pharma community, and we got a very large airport, that is commercial airport. Um, DH, was Airborne Express was founded here and here forever. DHL pulled out in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, they bought out Airborne, and they laid off nine thousand people in a city of twelve thousand people, so that has, the city really crashed right there, then there's been some leftovers trying to get things back on track.
Gotcha, and you said like the biggest, uh, industry is agricultural farming, or right now, that, about right?
No, it's probably, farming has become such mega farm, so we don't have a lot of farmers, we have a lot of farmland, but we don't have a lot of farmers, so probably a lot of, uh, industrial factories. Again, the airport out there has Amazon, and I, Pepsi, Polaris, there's a lot of big companies that use the airport for their shipping.
That's, that's.
And R and L, Trans-Tour, I mean, that's a natural, they're headquartered right here in the county.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Tub, you wanna ask a question?
I don't know, am I allowed to?
Yeah.
You can, but then immediately mute your mic. Is, is, is it still, is it still acting up, or? Yes, I'm hearing you. I don't know if anybody else is. I can work.
It's a little better now.
Alright, listen, alright, so hey, alright, hey, y'all. Hey, Tub. This is Tub. Hey, I, I've been on here before. Alright, so I actually, so I, I'm cheating off of your website that you already have up, your page, and there's some, there's three things specifically that you have listed that I want to ask you about, because I know that, like, even Eric and I, we run across some of this, but we are running locally, not Marcus, because, you know, it doesn't happen in his garage. Um, so inside of this, so the, the one that caught my attention first off is on your thing, you put selective code enforcement. That seems specific. That doesn't seem like, hey, it's just, so that, there, there truly must be an issue there, so what's the issue? And then what is your, um, resolution for it?
The, the issue was, like I said, I personally was attacked when they, they used zoning and code enforcement, tried to close my business down after the, uh, mayories. So it's a very personal issue. I've had friends that have been, they feel personalized, uh, singled out, um, and you need some code enforcement zoning type in a city, don't get me wrong, and now trying to even it out, I think is gonna be a very hard thing. We've gone from one extreme on our code enforcement, we had an app, you could just turn in everything. Then we get the new, again, goes back to the back and forth, we get a new administration, now I think the code enforcement officer position's sitting dormant. So the town's just kinda going to wreck for a little bit. So that, that field needs leveled out, and I don't know if we need to expand the department, if we need to eliminate the department, or?
Yeah. Trust me, for code enforcement, the answer is never extend. It's never extend. Yeah. And, and, and the reason why I say this, because, so it was a quote, basically a code enforcement issue for me. So they, the city selectively, uh, we got our church shut down. And, and so it was because of that, that I was like, okay, I started fighting with the city over that, and then that just made me re- start realizing all the messed up stuff that's going on in the city. And that actually was what prompted me to run for city council. So I, I, I fully understand selective code enforcement. And, but the, the other thing I'm gonna tell you is, don't, do not ever go again, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna save you some work. Do not ever go again and suggest more code enforcement, alright?
I am not gonna disagree with you at all.
I don't know that there are any voters out there either, that they're like, oh, oh, thank you, that's why I'm voting, that's what I want, you know?
There's always one.
More government, please give, so let me ask you a question. What, what did, what is your business, and maybe you were saying that as I was going crazy on here. What is your business, and what did they do, and what was their reasoning for shutting you down?
I bought a, uh, hundred and ten-year-old, Bill was a dealership in nineteen twenty, building downtown to move the building, I moved my business that I was into, and I made this purchase in seventeen. In two thousand eighteen, they changed their code enforcement zoning, whatever, then under the new administration, he decided he wanted to push back and deny my grandfather clause.
So, so what, what was their reasoning? What, what did they say was the reason why they were gonna shut you down?
'Cause when they changed the zoning from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, under the new zoning, um, I could not have, I'm in the downtown core of the entertainment district, whatever you wanna call it, and you can't have an auto repair, but it also says in the same guidelines that if you, previous to, you grandfathered in, you just can't expand.
So how did, how, how did you fight your way out of that one, or into that one, or back out of that one? How did you get out of it?
Well, I haven't. They come at me so backdoor, because there was no actual complaint, they literally just attacked me. So they wanted me to appeal, but there was nothing to appeal, so it got down, overheated, and got to like, well, you go ahead and press charges, then I can sue, we can wash this one out. So everybody's painting themselves in a corner, so I went for a council, I told them I was gonna continue business as a normal. This was illegal, and if they don't like it, arrest me, and that was probably a little bit over a year ago, and I've been doing just fine.
Yeah, how? He just kinda said, ah, well. I'm gonna do it anyway. You can stop me or do what you're gonna, how, how big is your council, your city council?
Uh, seven members.
Seven?
Yes.
And are they all at large? 'Cause you're, you're concerned at large, correct?
Uh, yes, I am. Uh, we have three at large and four wards.
Okay, so that's similar. It's a smaller version of what we have here, basically in Jacksonville, okay? Uh, so, alright, so I wanted to ask, so, so once again, Eric can attest this, this is a local issue for us here too, the downtown revitalization. So in your way, what are you saying? You're wanna do, what do you don't wanna do, what do you wanna continue, what do you wanna stop? And how do you promote revitalization without government being the answer?
So that's a good one, 'cause I bought in this building right before they, I didn't know they were kicking off a downtown revitalization plane down here. So I bought in the building right when things really kicked off, and I'd like to keep that going. The main hiccup we're having is parking. We need to get some more parking, get it more pedestrian-friendly. Talk to people that have empty storefronts, I have empty storefronts, I'm not gonna deny it, say, hey, why is your storefront empty? What do we need to do here? How can we help you? And help them get the grants and keep the building, again, they're old buildings, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty years old, they're, they need love, and they're expensive buildings, so just help the people that have the buildings, what do you need? I mean, the government has the money, those, quit sitting on us, give it to the people.
So are you suggesting that you would be open to using government funds to help revitalize these buildings, or to bring in new, uh, developers or anything?
Yes, and I'll give you two prime examples right here, 'cause I get argu- people with this all the time. When I bought in down here, there was a, a burnt-down, um, apartment building, like, cat a corner, so it just looked awful. The roof had washed in on it from being caved and had the best ascent, so now you have a brown site. The property is worth maybe a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna take a million dollars roughly to rehab it for an individual. The land bank was able to come in, do the rehab, clear the property, then sell it to whatever the bidder they decided on. So again, we use government money to tear down a dilapidated property, clean up the property, and put a functioning product, actually, there's two businesses on that property now, and they'll be putting condos on, so it was still unproductive.
Are they not holding the current property owners to task? It'd be like, shouldn't that be their responsibility to get it cleaned out?
Uh, they, this one went nowhere, and there was no money there to chase, I guess.
Okay, so then would you suggest that putting a lien on the property, basically, so that the, so that the city gets their money back? 'Cause that's, 'cause that's not city money, that's taxpayer dollars. And, and so would you suggest something like that for the new buyer, say, hey, we cleared it, but we need to get our money back for clearing it?
From the new buyer?
Yes, sir.
Um, I believe that's, and don't hold me this, I believe that's supposed to be figured in when they purchased the property back from the land bank. Now, again, I don't know if they break even or not, they're a corporation. So that's on them, but I think that's supposed to be the property purchase price back from the land bank, that's supposed to cover whatever cost that runs through for the most part. Now, we do have another building that was downtown, that is still there, a former Mason's building that the city or the government or whatever will lose money on, but it's one of them big, big brick buildings in between a couple of buildings, and had foundations issues, so they've had to buy the building, shore it up. So it's one of the situations, that building collapses, you're gonna lose the whole city block of downtown. So I do support tax dollars being put into that building and not being recouped if they're not recoupable, it is what it is.
That way, if something happens, it doesn't, uh, devastate the rest of the buildings around it.
The rest, right. Yeah, and you have a long-term investment to you, you don't wanna lose your downtown, cause a silly foundation on a building, I mean, yes, the government will lose money buying this building, but if you look at the long-term picture, along the other buildings and everything is upkeep, there will be tax revenue coming in other ways to justify that expense at that one time.
What, what's your vision for your downtown?
Uh, do, 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 I'd like to see it open more during the day, especially during the summer, a lot more pedestrian traffic. Um, little market, we do a farmers' market on Saturday. I'd like to see that move over with the other businesses, and we just leave the, the downtown closed for the weekend. We're on a street over, so we're not a truck route, so we don't affect traffic too much, and just have a nice place where people hang out over the weekend, they can get their coffee, they, we got a door district, so you can, if you sip, you can sip, I mean, whatever you wanna do.
So you want a city square, basically? You, you wanna have just an area where it's kind of understood, 'cause I'm guessing this is a smaller town, obviously.
Twelve thousand people, just under.
Oh, my, oh, alright, so we got more than my neighborhood, so, okay, so, but see, listen, there's a, there, you must appreciate, there's a high level of charm in small town, in small city like that.
Yes.
And, and, and so the best thing that you can do is, and if, if it makes sense, and you can say, Tub, you're way wrong on this one, but a lot of times you, you can build off of, that can be your thing, that you're not desiring to be like the big city.
Right.
And so you can have, like, like, I see, like, so where our church is, in, in Orange Park, Eric knows the area. It, it's, it's a smaller town technically, it's basically a suburb of Jacksonville, um, but they have that small-town feel, and it's different, and I don't think they want to. But here's the issue they have, and maybe you can attest to this, so because they're small, they wanna take a lot of money from the people, because they're limited on the funds that they could draw, because no citizens, basically. So how, how do you offset that? Because you're small, but you do say, hey, I wanna revitalize, I do wanna put some money, some government money to these buildings and stuff. How do you offset that with minimal population?
We have some great businesses here in the county that will donate and help step up. TimberTech, um, they, they're based here, they will step up. We have the World Auction Center, that's like the, one of the largest horse, I don't know, whatever horse people do in the world, they're here, yeah, so there, we have, Amazon is here, um, again, I can't even tell you who all is at the airport, so these businesses will, if, when talked to, and we have a port authority that works at the airport that does talk with the businesses and does work with the downtown, it tries to bring all the pieces together. So there is private money that can be used to help with the, and some of the downtown business, if you're gonna fix up the street in front of you, I mean, that does benefit you, so maybe that person does need to be talked to about, hey, how are you gonna chip in on this?
Listen, to me, that's the way, that, that's the ways, you get these ones around here, and you say, hey, if you want this to improve around you, why don't you put some skin in the game? Why, why don't you get involved? Alright, so I have one last question, if you're not gonna move, I'm gonna mute my microphone. Um, so what you say on your side, you say wasteful spending. What are some examples that you're seeing, and what would be your fix for some of those wasteful spending?
Well, here, I got highlighted right here, it was like, I don't know, maybe two thousand dollars of tax dollars were spent where the new mayor, when he was elected, had the outside lawyers research my social media post. So again, there's a silly wasteful.
There's one.
Yes, or wasteful spending is done, I mean, the government likes to talk, politicians like to talk, they like to spin the wheels, and they like to keep themselves in a job, they don't wanna, they don't wanna solve any issue too quick. We can talk about this, we can work this out. We can have some lunches, we can have a meeting and talk about a meeting while we address our next meeting. So again, the money just gets wasted and bled very slowly, like nothing getting done.
Yeah, uh, our guy Nathan here chimed in, uh, I, I guess he's a local, uh, you, do you know this guy, Nathan?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so thank you for, uh, chiming in, Nathan, about the, I, I read that, 'cause your, uh, airport there used to be an air force base, and a pretty decent-sized one.
Yes, they tried. Can you put the comment back up on the screen for the viewers? Yeah, there you go, sorry.
Yeah, the gliders, they used them more too, the piles were trained out here for them, so it's kinda cool, yeah.
Eric, are you satisfied?
Yeah, why, I, I mean, I could read it in our private comments, but I noticed if I couldn't, you know, anyways.
Yeah, and I'm gonna send a shout-out to, uh, Ryan Woodcraft, he's a very influential, up-and-rising libertarian.
Yep, currently elected libertarian.
Yeah.
Holding.
Holding.
Our guy Kenneth with the D three fifty five A welding machine and some concrete is all you need. If you know what's up with that, you are my people.
Yes.
Good attitude. Social media post on that is what, uh, your mayor spent money on. You gotta, wait a minute. This guy's a mechanic. He knows how to weld.
Something's up here.
Yeah. And then, uh, our guy Nathan changed back in. My grandfather was a glider pilot in World War Two. Flew out. That's awesome, dude. That's, I, I don't know if he was a D day, but that, that was some hardcore malarkey.
Those guys were the real deal back then.
Yeah. So I wanted to ask you, Jason, have you thought about, um, you know, possibly smoking some meat and bringing in a craft brewery into downtown Wilmington? Because that's where the bros are, man. You gotta have the craft.
Oh, see, we already poppin' down here. Across the street from me after I bought in, Tin Cap is a local cider place. They build in, they do smoke meat. Um, we have Trail House over this way. They do awesome breakfast. There's like five restaurants within
Okay.
A block. So yeah, it, it's, it's come up a lot down here. It's a nice start on being a decent downtown. If we will push it through and get entertainment, this will probably set.
So, uh, this is not really, sorry, Marcus. Uh, you go ahead. I, I was gonna say like, this is not really getting in the politics. It's more personal, but how is your business doing being downtown? Have you seen an uptick in business or has it, has it caught up the expense of purchasing the property and making it, uh, up to code to be able to work out of?
No, no, it's always been profitable. And again, I had two locations and I use the downtown with my, that's supposed to create the rub for my big projects. Then the other building I was renting, then when things started, I started winding down. I just closed down the other shop and I'm working slowly, solely out of this one. So I have seen a customer. You always see a different demographic of people when you move locations. So, and again, I'm throttled down because I don't wanna rattle the city up too much and try to run a full blown. Cause they are doing an entertainment district. So there's a lot of foot traffic and car traffic on a Thursday and Friday. So I do my best to work around the local bars and everything to not try to impede them, let them do their thing. And I stay in my little dungeon.
Gotcha. You button things up about five PM and let them do their thing basically?
Yes, yes.
So would it be detrimental to you to allow a like food trucks to come in and use your space and?
Oh, no, no, though. Food trucks are always welcome down here. People love it when they bring the food trucks in.
Yeah. But I'm saying on your property, give them like, uh, is there room for them to set up on yours to?
I do glizzy sometimes, believe it or not. I first run in front of shop and.
Now we're talking Tub's language.
Yes. I'll do the hot dogs, dirty water style and soak in the water and, uh, whoever, I mean, just kind of a little party. If you do that block, it's a good time.
Gotcha. Awesome.
Can Tub hear us? Cause he's the motionless.
I can't talk. My hands are tied. But that's awesome.
Well, I, I muted because Eric's fussing. So I, 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 I don't wanna set him off because.
Tub, it sounds good now. Okay.
Listen, he, he's a, he's a new dad and he might get, he might get set off easy.
I got a gun right here. No, just kidding.
Hey, 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 we're, we're not gonna have no white on white violence on the Black Powder Podcast.
It's always safe. It's in my stock box.
Always. There's your promo. So all right, um, what, what is, what is the likelihood of your win? Now I'm gonna ask you, and I, and I, I'm being honest here. Okay. Cause I usually lie all the time, but I'm gonna be honest about this one. Um, I, I've been going through a lot of candid stuff. Was it yours that I saw that there's three open seats and only four people running and they can all kind of fall in there? Is that yours?
Yes, yes. Majority, majority, three highest votes win.
All right. So that this, those are pretty solid odds for you.
Yeah.
Like, well, I would hope.
I'm gonna get three Republicans in Republican county. So.
Uh, I say because you have a, you have a seventy-five percent chance of winning. So it, so what is the likelihood really?
Pipe fair. I don't wanna say fifty, fifty, but during the mayor race, again, I was a nobody and I went against, uh, the mayor's a, he was a commissioner. He's a former sheriff. He's a lifetime politician in Clinton County. And I pulled a third of the vote from him. So again, that was being nobody. That was two years ago. So I'm a little bit better known now. I've mailed it out. I haven't had no bad videos of me misbehaving, released this go around. So.
What? You had some of those.
He's not a libertarian.
Yeah, you're not a real libertarian.
Month ain't over yet. So.
You still have time to change your thing to Republican if it ended up being fine. Um, so realistically, what do you think you have to win vote wise, vote wise? What, what's your number?
Uh, pipe. I need to match at least what I got during the marriage race, which was like by nine hundred and I'd like to get twelve hundred.
That's nine hundred, nine hundred. That would you said nine hundred?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
Nobody votes here.
Well, twelve hundred would be.
Almost ten percent.
Off. So what, twelve hundred would be ten percent. And if you look at like in a, in.
That's the total population.
Local election, how many, how many people, what percentage of voters vote your local election? If you got twelve thousand, what percentage usually vote in local election?
Yes, we got four thousand registered here.
All right. So a quarter, twenty-five percent are gonna vote the local election, right? Four thousand. I'm, you know.
Hoping.
And you're getting twelve hundred of that. That's over twenty-five percent. You know what I mean? Right?
In theory.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, uh, man, I think you gotta bump those numbers up. Well, what can, so.
No, but no, hold on.
You, because you're, you're trying, you're trying, you're right.
Right.
You're only trying to beat one other person.
Yes. The last three mayor or the last big council races, the top vote getter for council was around a thousand votes.
Gotcha.
I looked it up last night.
What, what did the, what did the lowest, like twelve, like thirteen votes?
We just need third. What?
You see third?
Yeah. And I've been telling everybody when they vote, just vote for one person and I don't tell them me, but I'd like it to be me. If they just make that one vote, cause if you make all three votes, that's two that orders down my vote. So just make that single vote, bullet vote.
Yeah. Tell them if you really like me and you don't know the other three, just vote for me.
Yes.
Hey, Eric here with the lines.
So can, can people, can people vote for more than one?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, you're not three, you're not three choices on the, for the at large.
It ranked choice.
That's almost ranked choice voting. Almost, almost.
Yeah, yeah. I like it. And this is the second person we've had on the podcast that it's kind of like that. It's a open guerrilla primary and the top, how many ever get?
Why it gotta be a gorilla?
Hey, I'm just saying.
It's an open Marcus.
It's a Democrat election. I'm kidding.
Look, Ryan Woodcraft actually complimented Eric with their marine math. And Eric was actually in the army, which has lower standards. I'm not saying.
No, no, that, all right, listen. For the record, the army has higher.
Army has higher standards.
Score requirements. I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. He said marine math.
I know. Well, that's, that was how bad it was. Well, I was trying to remember what he said for the, I was trying to remember what he said. I knew twelve thousand, four thousand. And he wants twelve hundred. That's more than twenty-five percent.
It's all good, bro. I mean, I know you had a couple.
Are, are, are we taking it from Ryan Woodcraft? Ryan? We're taking it from Ryan? Yeah. No, remember? Ri- Ryan and I have a riff. Him and I have, he's, he's my Newman. So.
He's, he's an elected libertarian.
Every time.
Nope. Not him.
Every time, for the record, I'm not a math guy. Spoiler alert, I'm not a math guy. Every time we go out to eat, I hand the server my card and I hand it back to my wife when it comes back and I say, do the math. Every time.
That's what smart ones are.
Mr. Stoops, there, there is a high likelihood of your being in office.
Yes.
Yes.
That's why we have him on.
So.
We're gonna take credit for that too. Regardless of the fact, uh, that it's four spots and three candidates, we're taking credits.
Yeah, we're owning that. But hey, you're welcome.
I, I would. Remember who got you elected.
I, I expect invites to your organization. I, I expect to be like, hey.
I got another round to go.
Yeah. Oh, so this is just a primary.
Well, if I win this, I'm gonna run for mayor again.
All right.
Say that again? What, what happened?
If I win council, then in two years I'm gonna run for mayor again.
How long? How long the term for city council?
Uh, two years.
Oh, two years.
Are there, are there term limits at all?
Oh, no, 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 no. We've got people from, been counseled for nineteen eighty-one still up there talking.
Oh, shoot.
Oh, hey, fun fact. Yeah, my. No, no, no. There's a, uh, the mayor of where I live, she's been in, uh, city council since like eighty-three, eighty-four. And she still has, and she still has the same hairstyle as eighty-three, eighty-four. I said, that was the number one reason why you should never vote for her. Because she hasn't changed her hairstyle. It's like the poison. Uh, nineteen eighties heavy metal rock, like.
Is that you or could you?
You voted for her?
Hell no.
Oh, Marcus, did you run against her? Could you run against her?
Not from his garage. Well.
No, I'm just saying like, you know, like not a.
For mayor, I, I think I need to beat the former police chief in my district who ran unopposed before I tried mayor.
Well, I was just, all right, that's fine.
I tried mayor first.
So, Mr. Stoops.
Yes.
Hey, so what do you, what are you finding as, cause are you, basically you can go through, you can go through the whole city. But what are you, what are you finding as you get? Cause here's what happens. So actually I had a conversation about this the other day. So you know how, you know how you go out to an area and you assume you know the issues of the people? Like you know, like what's, like I, I made that mistake horribly. So I, I, I'll make this as brief as I can, but there's a little place up right, a few blocks away from my house actually. And, and so there's always, there's a little convenience store and a little kind of like canopy type thing out there. And, and they sit out there all day. The, the people just sit out there. A bunch of older black guys. They all sit out there all day. And so I would keep driving by, driving by, drive by. I'm like, one of these days I'm gonna stop in there and I'm gonna find out what's going on. And, and so finally one day I did, and naturally as soon as I get out of my pickup truck, they're like, oh, this dude's a cop. Like that was the first thing. This is cop. And, and so I started talking to them a little bit and, and I asked them, I'm like, hey, what is your biggest issue here in this area? And, and, and listen, me, me, I figured I had them figured out. And I figured one of their top issues is gonna be police because we have police issues here in town. And I figured they probably say something about housing. So in my mind, I'm like, let's just, and, and I remember I asked them that question and they go, hey, I go, hey. And they go say, they say, see that road right there? I said, yes, I do. They go, that road floods every time it rains. And, and their biggest issue, which I never would have thought of was drainage, drainage. And then they had a full explanation about how, and then we realized the councilman that had been in office forever, that he was in that whole area and never cared, never cared. And, and, and so I, I tell people now and they get, when they're going out and they're talking and they're running for office, I always tell them, say, hey, get rid of all presuppositions. Go out willing to hear what the people are saying the issue is. So as you go out, what are you finding in your small town is the bigger issue for the people?
That homeless, that's our main complaint.
Homeless?
Yes.
That's odd for a city of twelve thousand. Yeah.
I, I know.
And with our ministry homeless shelter review, I'll call it the homeless shelter. We have one of them also is right downtown. So it's very visible right on the main street. So again, we don't have an abnormally high number of homeless, but they're more visible than you would have in other areas. So that's the main complaint for everybody and trying to get them to understand that these people aren't just as simple as a, give them a job and send them on the happy way. We have some mental health issues. We have drug addiction issues. We have a lot of issues and trying to, it's just not a simple fix. They're just putting them somewhere. Which goes back to what we were talking about the camping policy. If we can get somebody with their hands on to talk to them. And when you have the mental illness and try to get them where they need to be and help them out a little bit.
That, so, go ahead, Eric.
No, I was gonna, I was gonna reference back to Tub. His wife runs a homeless ministry and Jacksonville has that same problem. The Laura White mission or whatever is like right downtown. But, and mu- your wife has said like, the problem is all of the resources are also downtown. So like, if you move the homeless off and you don't move the resources with them, how are the, how are they gonna commute to the resources, especially like the mentally health, mental health issues and, uh, you know what I mean? Like other ones that got probation. You gotta go to the courthouse and check in with your probation officer and he's in the jail or whatever. You know what I mean?
They, they wanna move the ministry, which is fine, but you're not solving the issue. You're just moving the building, you're moving the people. We still have the same issues. It's just gonna be another part of town. Let's figure out what we can do with the issue before we go press and pressure on somebody to relocate where they are.
Yeah. So.
I'm, I'm gonna get to this. I'm sorry. I just gotta get to this comment real quick. Ryan, we're not gonna have this type of vulgar language on this podcast. So I asked you to.
Says credit where credit is due. Great advice from Tub.
We're not gonna have a type of vulgar language here on this podcast.
Listen, maybe there's a chance for Ryan and I. Maybe there's hope. Like maybe we could exchange some text messages and get this finally behind us, you know?
I don't know.
I, I had to interrupt. I had to interrupt Tub's point.
Okay, so.
Just to say, we're not trying to get canceled. We're not gonna have that type of crap.
Remember when he was on and I dipped out quick and y'all got mad at me because I didn't say bye to him. He like turned on me.
He's like, I'm not blaming Tub.
I don't blame him.
Honestly, Ryan sounds like a good judge of character for.
So yeah, so that's why we don't like it. Ryan Woodcraft. So here's the thing. So for, for the homelessness, so the state, the mental issues, we got, we got rid of state hospitals. And that, that, that was part of the problem right there.
That's very libertarian though.
Yeah, yeah, sort of. Um, so now also a big problem here in town. So as my wife was running that, that, that small homeless ministry. Um, here's what was happening. People have this thinking that says, oh, they're not doing anything. They just wanna be out there. There was a number of them that, um, had two jobs. They're, they're working, but they couldn't get the money for like a down payment for an apartment and stuff along those. They couldn't get all of that money together. So that kept them out on the streets. So that was one issue. And then also because we do, cause we're, obviously we're so big here. Um, so there's a number of major homeless ministries and centers downtown. And they're big, but here's what happened. One night I was out there talking to them and I said, hey, listen, they were out there hanging on the street. I said, you know, I said, you could have gotten into city rescue earlier this evening. And they go, yeah, they go, we don't go there anymore. I'm like, okay, well, what's the problem? And they said, now what they've done is they're, they're, all of these shelters down there are getting their funding through drug rehab things. So they were telling all the homeless people to come in to say they had a drug problem. So that were there, they could get them on their roll and they could get funding based on that. And these two guys in particular, they're like, we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna go in there and lie that we have a drug or an alcohol problem. Just have a place to spend the night for the night. So they can get funding. So there's a, so homelessness, you're right, is a big, it's not an easy fix. It's not just a, hey, send them on there. Like it's not gonna be like that. But at the same time, you're going to deal with it. So we're always kind of dealing with it here. Our city council is just a mess when it comes to it. So what would you suggest? Like, as you talk to them, what do you tell them? Hey, I have an idea about this. Like what, what are you coming up with?
I've sent them several, uh, copies of different ordinances from other cities in the state of Ohio of how to solve this issue. And the mayor put one together that was fairly poorly done. They just allowed twenty-four hour camping. So it was really backwards about it. So then the hardest part about the camping policy is getting the, uh, people in the ministries that are hands-on with the homeless to understand that we're creating a law to help the people, not to hurt the people. They are so, well, this is gonna hurt. No, this is not to hurt them. We have, they have choices here. They're not being forced into anything. I mean, so it's to help them, not to hurt them. So getting that, as funny as it sound, getting the left, this is one of the issues. You cannot get both sides on. The left doesn't like it. Because you're putting laws against the homeless people and the right doesn't like it because you're trying to force the homeless people into help. So it's like, camp, whatever we do.
So what, what do you find is your fix? Like what are, what are you able to offer for that?
Again, a nice simple camping, uh, policy. The police officer comes across a person who's illegal camping or squatting or whatever you wanna use the term. They check them out. They're okay. They call Christ response team. Your Christ response person talk comes in, the police go on their way. The Christ response person gets them to the homeless shelter. Gets them, if they need to go to the hospital. We see that a lot with these people. They just need to go straight to the hospital. Um, now you might get the occasional person that refuses everything, then the police have to get involved again. That is what it is.
Do, do you have enough shelter space that you could basically house the homeless that are there?
Yes.
Oh, really?
I think so. There's a pipe with, yeah, cause the one, the one shelter we use, they do offer hotel rooms and stuff. So we're close and then it depends. You always got the hot topic of homeless coming in from other demographics getting brought in here. So if you, if we don't have the outside people being brought in, I'm gonna say with our own homeless, we are real close to capacity to hold what we have. At least for long enough to get them a process to get into housing or hospitals where we need.
I, I've heard of, uh, smaller towns busing their homeless out of their towns.
For real.
Bigger cities.
That happens here in California all the time.
I haven't heard of it going the other way. Is it going the other way or?
Oh yeah, it goes all the way. It's, it's actually quite comical. There's one gentleman here, we've had issues with, and I paid for his bus ticket to go to Louisiana, gave him another chance. Um, Green County, one county over, they've dropped their problem children off. Clinton County drops their problem children over to this county that. So we, all the counties do, and I've seen it sit there in the courtroom with the judge, order somebody out of the county. Order somebody out of the county. That's part of their probation. You cannot be in the county. So they get a police ride to the neighboring county and.
So, uh. But then it just becomes, that's just a legal issue and that doesn't make it better.
No, no, it just, just moves them.
Right, right. And, and so there's, and that's, that's, let me, it's very, that right there is very indicative of government period. There's no real solutions. It's just, just kicking down the road.
That's, that's government justifying its existence. By saying, look what we did. We removed this threat from your vicinity. And guess what? They just throw it in somebody else's backyard.
Yeah, and your neighbors doing the same thing to you.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's just a, it's literally the domino effect because that domino just falling. And you know, it's going around a trail and it's going around. Yeah.
So, so if, if this, uh, start up, if the crisis response team showed up and said, hey, or the resources. And they refuse to accept them, do the police get called back? I mean, how's that work?
Yes, that's where the ordinance comes in and jail isn't optional in this one for the second offense, unfortunately, the way I'm proposing it. And again, you gotta have, to have leverage, gotta have some teeth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can't have people just camping on the sidewalks. That's just pretty simple. Especially in the middle where they need to be somewhere that needs for help for them.
So how would you feel if they're on private property? And they're staying there and the property owner isn't really saying anything? Do you feel like they should then be moved out anyway? Or are you like, hey, they're not the city's problem?
That's private property. If there's no issues and the neighbors don't have any complaints, there's no violations, everybody's happy for the most part and. In private property, have fun.
Because that was part of our issue here, where downtown has certain lots that aren't developed yet or whatever, and they were privately owned, of course. And, and so honestly, I think the people who own some of the property, they're not even local. So that they really didn't even know what's going on with the property. And the cops would go back there and run them off anyway. And I'm kinda like, if nobody's saying anything and there's no complaint, well, why are you making a problem out of it?
Well, I've seen, I've seen some communities where they have kinda like almost a reverse trespassing law in their town. That if a business has a person, uh, in their stube during the, during the night they shouldn't be, and it's not posted that they can be there. They ought, the police automatically, uh, move them along with trespassing.
Yeah, and, and that I agree with. Like, like, I'm not against that. Like, that makes sense. Like entryways and stuff like that. But this was, like, I've seen them do it with property that it's undeveloped property. There's no buildings there, maybe some grown up grass stuff along those lines. And they're rushing them out. And I'm like, that, that's probably the best place for them to be, in all honesty.
Yeah, well, again, like I said, what do you do with them? I mean, if you got houses, like I said, we can just move them along around a circle back to the whack-a-mole game, but. We've run into that issue a couple times. They've raided a house or two and had ten, fifteen of the homeless people and just squatting in there. They raided the house, kick everybody out, but they don't have a plan. So boom.
No, that, right.
Yeah, you just put fifteen people hanging on their drug addicts on the streets on a cold November night. Thank you. That's gonna be fun for the next couple of weeks.
They, they basically flick the lights on and the roaches have to run off and they don't care about where they're going. They just know they're not here anymore. It's kinda like, and I, hold on, and I don't wanna compare the homeless people to roaches. I wanna make sure that's not what's happening there.
That's, that's perfectly fine.
Well, I'll give you an example. So ye- years ago, years, like when I first moved out of my parents' house, I, I, I moved in with a female friend of mine. And, and we.
Not his wife.
We, we are broke. We, we are broke. And, and I remember, so we were like in HUD type housing. And, and I remember when we first got in there, like the first night we were getting ready to stay there, there were, there were roaches like everywhere. And I'm like, I'm not, I, I. I left, like, I'm not staying here. But here's what was funny, and this is what we're talking about, is though, so they said, okay, fine, we'll take care of it. And they came in and they sprayed, but all they did was force them to the other apartments attached to us.
Yes.
Never solved the problem. But they weren't in front of me, so it's okay.
Yeah.
Until later on, when the, the house is next to you, you start bombing them and they come back again. It, it, it's kind. It's what, like I said, not, again, I'm not comparing homeless to roaches, but I am saying that's, that's the issue. It's the issue. That's what, so, Mr. Stoops. So what would you say is your personal, like, the one thing that you say, I would run on this alone? What would that issue be? What that topic is? And how would you implement it on day one? When, cause you're fixing to be in office. So what will you do with it on day one?
I'm just gonna fight with them on this camping policy. I mean, that's just where we're at on it. I think the city needs it. And I gotta get everybody to understand how this is better for the community and it's not just a handout or hand up or whatever you wanna call it. I have other examples where it's functional and it's working and the Supreme Court's already passed that test. So we're good to run with it. We just gotta get everybody to, on the same page and pull the trigger.
Do, do you, do you know these other guys on council? Do you know them?
Yes, for the most part. It's a small town. I mean, we don't go out hanging out together or nothing, but I know my name. We talk a little bit.
Can you work with them?
When we get to that point, yes.
Will they work with you?
That's up to them.
They're gonna have to, right? Get something done.
No, I'm just gonna say that's their problem.
Yeah, no, we've talked to them. I think once they understand they, they are in a, uh. More disproporately, they don't see all the, all of the issue. I mean, they see their part of it and they see how this affects this. But they're not seeing the outside and why we don't do it like this or why we can't do that. We have a couple lawsuits against the city because the new mayor wanted to go hard against the homeless. Well, guess what? They have constitutional rights. They are people just like the rest of them. So we got lawsuits floating. I was trying to explain. And show the laws, how to work with the laws and get the problem solved. So we don't give ourselves more trouble.
Could you, uh, use that leverage when talking to taxpayers, voters and be like, hey, every one of these lawsuits against the homeless. You're paying for it as a taxpayer. You know what I mean? The city doesn't have money that they didn't take from you already. You know what I mean? Or going to take from you in the future. Can you use that as leverage when talking to them about?
I've been pushing that. Um, the past three council meetings or maybe four council meetings, I think they've okayed almost like a quarter million dollars for the mayor to spend on outside legal fees. To fight the lawsuits that are going. So I mean, right there, a quarter million dollars in three months, that would house a lot of.
Exactly. You could have solved half the problem right there alone.
And instead of giving it to a group of lawyers up in Columbus.
Exactly. So I mean, that's a good, uh, talking point there. Like, every one of these lawsuits comes out of your pocket.
Yes, just trying to get everybody to understand why the lawsuits are there. Cause I've talked to a few voters and they, they don't understand where the laws are broken at. And how you can't send private investigators into religious institutions without search warrants and such.
Yeah. Bill of Rights exists.
Yes, yes, that Bill of Rights, not roadblocks. That's why I'm telling people that's Bill of Rights.
So Jason, you, you, uh, I, I gotta say you're a very impressive guest, uh, tonight. Um, because I, I gotta be honest, your, your website didn't have a lot, but you did a lot tonight. And I just wanna, um, start, stop Tub.
I've shown the website.
Oh, okay. I got you. But I wanted to say you have a more impressive southern accent than Tub and Eric.
I'm not from here. I'm not from here.
Yeah, but you have the name Tub. It's perfect for Backwoods, Florida. I mean, there is no other better name you could have.
I got, dude, but I.
Ohio ain't the south, but it's.
I know it's not the south.
Florida's not the south.
I wanna say.
The other day, I'm like, Florida's not the south.
North Florida is though, like.
McLennan Sanderson and stuff to get the south.
Yule, I'm from Yule. So that's.
Yeah, what, so listen.
Country.
You get Florida, the further south you go, the less southern it is in reality.
Florida is Dixie. I don't give a, a rat's. North Florida is South Georgia and South Al- Lower Alabama. That's what we call.
And Mississippi.
This has nothing to do with Mr. Stoops at all, but.
I just wanted to say how impressed I was with his southern accent. Cause he sounds like he's from Alabama or Georgia. That's.
You know why? Because the Midwest and the South are the same. They are the same, okay?
I would not insult Mr. Stoops like that. I would not do that.
Mr. Stoops, how far are you from Akron?
Uh, about two hours.
A little bit away. Cause my, my dad was from Akron.
Okay.
And, and so, uh, so anyway, so.
My wife's family's from Akron.
It's definitely not a good place. Akron has some issues.
Oh, dude, now? Like for, no, for real, they do now, like.
Marcus, California has some issues.
We're the fifth largest economy in the world, buddy.
Look, you cannot use that as a talking point anymore.
Yes, I can. Fifth largest economy is still.
Listen, no, no, if, hold on.
Every, every year I do this, you're gonna drop.
Yep, that's what I'm saying. So if, nobody says, hey, man, we're second. We used to be first, but man, it's great being second. Nobody does that. So if you are six.
I came second in the mayor race.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If you would come from six and you became five, that's an impressive stat. But you're not, you are regressing, okay?
Well, not, not you.
Still tough eye, bro.
No.
Not you, Jason. You will win.
You, you are ruining California all by yourself, Marcus.
I wanna get back to a, um, Wilmington, uh, Ohio.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll have Eric read this, cause this is too much math for me.
Hold on. We should also change the county's minimum square foot dwelling from eight forty square feet to a lesser number. So we can set up tiny housing for homeless individuals that need it. Currently, it's illegal to have more than one dwelling on a parcel. And that dwelling has to be eight hundred and forty square feet. Also, each dwelling has to have at least a hundred and fifty square feet of road frontage. Makes it harder to create affordable housing. Uh. Tub, the term escapes me, but what are those like kinda waivers they'll give you on the road frontage? We hear them all the time in Jacksonville. Essentially, they'll, the, at a city council meeting. What?
We, variance.
Yeah, variance. There you go, Jason. Uh, it happens all the time in Jacksonville. They'll give, uh, well, Tub needs to go to more city council meetings, but they'll constantly, the, uh, land use and zoning commission.
Yes.
Will continuously give variances. And I'm okay with it because it, it gives. A, uh, step up to the property owner. Tub and I talked about it, though, it's like they should just have an across-the-board, like, why are you applying for a variance? And it should automatically be granted. You know what I mean? Like, in a sense.
If it's not infringing on the neighbors.
If you're, yeah, if you're not building a building, you, you get my point, that will block access to another piece of property. Then the variance could, so I get the point, like, that is the problem. A hundred and fifty square feet of road frontage. That could impede ingress and egress to a property. But that's a lot. A hundred and fifty.
But, that really is a lot.
That is a lot. You know what I mean? If it's not gonna block a single wide being pulled, an extra wide load is why I say that, a single wide. An extra wide load, if it's not gonna block that being pulled through, then it should be approved. I don't, go ahead, Tub.
Do you, Mr. Stoops, do you guys have accessory dwelling units up there?
No, we don't have anything like that. We've already even put zoning dense. All pipes, again, like our federal homeless, they outlawed, uh, mobile homes inside the city limits. So again, they've really pushed against, combination that and the land bank, we really created our own homeless issue here in Washington, unfortunately.
Uh, you know, I, I, I made a post the other day, a couple of days ago. I said, listen, to lower rent prices, remove restrictions on private property. Because.
Hold on, he said, uh, a hundred and fifty linear feet. I'm, I missed.
Okay. Well, that, that's still though, if you, I mean, linear feet. That's a lot. How wide is a, uh, anyways, you know what I mean? I'm saying, how, how wide is a signal wide? Forty, sixty, eighty feet?
I don't know. That's, that's, that's you.
Nearly double. As long as you can get a commercial vehicle, a long bed in and out of downtown, loading and unloading vehicles. Then I don't see what the big deal is. As long as you're not blocking ingress and egress.
But you know, here's the thing, the reality of it is, okay, so you could technically, Eric, you've been in, you've been in my house many times.
Yeah.
We could, we could technically remove our house, which is not a big house. We could remove our house realistically. And put right here on our lot, so I have space in between and, and have five. You know, tiny houses, easily.
You could build a quadplex there or whatever, you know what I mean?
And, and, and I look at that and I go, that could start solving the problems. If you allow the people to say, hey, because here's what happens. Okay, so like people have a house and, and I don't wanna sound Democrat in this one. Uh, I sound like a liberal. So people can have houses and they have extra rooms and stuff they don't use, but you're not gonna let strangers be in your house. I fully understand. So, but imagine if they said, hey, a person only needs three hundred and thirty square feet. So like they don't need a whole house. So imagine how many three hundred and thirty square feet houses you can get on a lot. And now you're housing that many more people as opposed to just one family or one person in one single family house.
One thing about the affordability too, the price of a smaller house versus the price of a three-bedroom mega house. I mean. More likely to make it a four and a half. They could take some ownership in it and take some pride in it. They start getting their lives back on track.
Exactly. And now I'm going to, I may or may not be, okay, I wanna make that very clear. I may or may not be currently building a tiny house in our backyard.
I can neither confirm nor deny the present.
Precisely. And, and if I ever were to, if I ever were to, it would be great to have my mother-in-law live in. Okay, so if I was ever going to consider that, I, I could do that right there. And, and here's the thing, I would maybe be able to do it for, if I had to guess, twenty thousand dollars.
For, uh, uh, can I say this?
Yes.
Um.
Hypothetically speaking, if you put wheels on it, they might not be able to do anything to you about it.
And, and it may actually be, it could be like three hundred and sixty square feet. So inside of that.
I would never want to live in the.
It's a big shed.
Projects. That's what I'm thinking about.
That's, I'm not the project anymore. Listen.
Dude, Tub has.
I'm out.
Tub has river views.
Yeah, and they're the projects. They're the riverfront project. That's what I.
Don't exist in Jacksonville.
I, I, hey, we got, timeout, we gotta clear something up. I gotta, listen, I, I am, I, I am river view, not river front. I can afford river view. I cannot afford river front. I can see the river. I can't live on it, okay? Now, but here's, but here's my thing though. It, it's kinda like what you were saying, Mr. Stoops, is that once you do that, it does give you a sense of ownership. It can be done rather inexpensively. You, you know what I'm saying? So i- if he truly, but the problem is, I, I don't think they care about really solving the problem.
Government justifying its existence. Go ahead.
And all the organizations that work with the homeless, I hate to say it, but you got a business that, you gotta, they wanna port themselves out of business. I mean, most businesses aren't in business that eliminate their own jobs. So they're kinda fighting themselves.
It's just like the pharmaceutical industry. They're not gonna bring you the cure. They're gonna bring you the answer to the symptoms.
Yes, and they, they, they do well at moving the people. Don't get me wrong there. I don't wanna talk bad about the sources, but they're, it's not big enough to, uh, solve the online age.
But also, al- also if you take those, if they're ministries or if they're privately funded or however they are. Um, so you take those and you remove them, those people are not, like you said, that's their livelihood. That's their jobs. They, they, they technically, let's be very clear. There's a high level of the shelters don't want to solve homelessness. They, they don't want to because it's not beneficial to them to solve homelessness.
Yes, put themselves out of the job.
Ri- right. And, and so we could, and I think that's part of the issue, is that we just keep feeding the machine. And, and, and nothing gets solved. And like what Marcus says many times already even tonight, that's government justifying itself.
Yeah, it's just like a machine leaking oil. You, you keep dumping oil in it, they feed the machine, keep it going. It's leaving all those spots, gonna be bad spots instead of fixing the issue.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I don't know if I feel good or bad knowing that even small town is having these issues. You're like, dude. I know we're at time.
No, I wanna get to Kenneth's question, cause I think this is very important for anybody that's in the, uh, Big Ten. Uh, like myself, as far as a football fan with USC, are you related to the Stoops?
Uh, Bob Stoops, the, is it football, was he in Oklahoma?
Yeah.
Way off, I believe.
Way off?
Way off. I can't, don't even hold me to that. Now, when my kids were in school, they had a couple of teachers that were fans. And I just told them, tell everybody that they're Uncle Bob, so it helped them out of school with teachers or whatever.
Kenneth is from, uh, Oklahoma. You know, that's the Big Twelve. We don't count them as, oh, no, I think Oklahoma went to the SEC.
SEC, yeah.
They are now.
Yes.
They're in the big leagues.
Cause Florida sucks. Yeah, they, Florida sucks.
Hey, Florida's at Texas, though. That's crazy.
Listen, we don't talk about Florida.
We do.
No.
We do.
Whiny turds. Listen, I tell everybody all the time, it's not the team of Florida that, it bothers me. It's the fans of Florida. Whiniest people you will ever meet. They never get beat. It's always, it's the rest.
I'm, you, no, it's never an excuse like, I will say, they stink.
You know what I mean? They, they don't get outplayed. It's always.
They didn't, they're a bad team.
Yeah, they just suck. They're just horrible. Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna do our last go-around here and ask Tub and Eric to, uh, statement question. And then, uh, myself, and then we're gonna let Jason have the last word. We're gonna start off with Tub. Uh, because we always believe in letting the special needs kids, uh, have their moment to shine. So.
I, 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 no, 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 no. I can't, I can't do it.
Bite your tongue there, Tub. I gotta bite your tongue.
Well, okay, watch this. Okay. So all right, watch. I, I'm going to, I, I got a text message for, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Does, 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 what's called, watch this podcast?
Who?
Mr. Cohen?
Uh, occasionally I was talking to him earlier this week about some Javier Millay stuff, but.
Send him a link.
We, 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 he, he texted me yesterday. He's like, listen, he's like, I'm going through Ephesians and I'm not putting anything bad out there. He goes, I'm going through Ephesians and he goes, I'm just trying to be careful that I'm not joking in a bad way. And I'm like, dude, and we're talking, I said, listen, I said, it's fine. You just gotta know when to kind of draw that line. You know, don't go, don't get dragged into it. And then be like, oh, and I almost did it right there. I almost, I almost fell for it myself.
You did it. It's on there. It's.
I, 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 I started and I can't, I can't do it. All right. So.
You bit your tongue, right?
I, I did. I did. And it hurt, it hurt a little bit. Like I.
Tub, honestly, that's why you're my favorite Christian. I gotta be honest with you because you're a real individual.
You check yourself before you wreck yourself.
Before I wreck, I riggedy wreck myself.
Yeah, I, I respect you deeply in that, yeah, but in that respect.
All right. So here's the thing. I, I do, I heard part of the conversation as early, you know, I had all the sound issues and stuff. Um, I believe it was before the thing. I'm gonna mention it because people might be watching and wondering why we haven't mentioned it. But I believe you said you were basically self-funding this. You're not raising any funds, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And maybe if you could explain that why real quick, uh, cause I don't think that wasn't in the, that was before the show, correct?
Yeah, we didn't, we actually didn't discuss it.
You, what's that?
I said, we actually didn't discuss it for sure. We just, that quick of self-funding, that's as far as we went with it.
Okay. All, the reason why I, I bring it up specifically is people are gonna be like, hey, why did you help raise the money? Uh, and, and we can go, hey, this is why. Cause usually Marcus will always push the idea, hey, send this guy money, send this guy money. And he'll put the link up there and everything, but you didn't have that. So I wanna make it very clear. Marcus, oh, this hurts. Marcus, Marcus didn't fail.
Do anything wrong.
Right. Marcus, this time, this time. All right. So are, are you finding that you got enough funds or it's just not gonna take much? Or you just?
No, I think there's been like ten dollars spent on this campaign. I'm even using the yard signs out of use for the mayor's sign. So we were like spending no money. This is pure.
The most efficient campaign ever.
Yes. The council job pays four hundred dollars a month. It's not worth putting any money into. That's just not economical.
Wait, how much does it pay? How much does it pay a month?
Four hundred dollars, I believe.
Okay. So at least.
Every government position should make only four hundred dollars a month.
Every, everything in me wants to move to, wants to move to Wilmington, Ohio and run for office. Everything in me wants to just go, dude, we're going, we're going in. All right. So listen.
So there's one spot left.
Listen, Mr. Stoops, don't let me come in there. Listen, let's go take that place over. I'll take one, you take one, we rush them out.
It's simple enough.
And then we shrink the size of government.
Yeah, lock the doors.
Just, we're done. All right. So I, I'm going to do close this up, Mr. Stoops. I thank you for coming on, brother. Uh, and, and I fully, I'll, I'll mention, like, we always tell people, or we try to, I think, we try to remind them that when this is all said and done and the election's over. Uh, even if you didn't get in, we'd like you to come back. Okay? Um, because a lot of times we wanna hear, hey, what, what happened? What didn't work? Because here's what we try to do, especially as Marcus has been pushing a lot lately. We wanna help candidates. And, and so libertarians, we're our own beast when we run for office, like it's different. And, and so I think that as much as we can always kind of pass off more information to what would be candidates, the way we, that's, this is kind of our way of helping all of them. So if, when you win, because listen, dude, I think of all the people we've had on here, you might have the best chance of getting in, like for real. So.
In fourteen days, eighteen days.
Well, lately we've had some good ones. Lately we've had some good ones on, but Stoops, your odds are in our favor. I say.
Yeah.
Favor.
When, when I said that, that was not a shot at the people we've had on. You just said, we know the reality of an election, but dude, like this is a legit spot. What's up? So, uh, either way, we would like, and I would say, I would like to have you come back on, win or lose, and just kind of go over it again and we can kind of keep up with you. And then get ready, because either way, you're gonna get ready for a mayoral race.
Yeah, yeah. Well, unless I lose, then I'll probably go take some time off. But yeah, if I win, then we'll get through the mayor race. I'd like to, I'll have some campaign finance on that one. So I have to spend some money next time.
So next time, if you run for mayor, you're gonna do what? A couple hundred bucks?
Yeah, maybe. Start out there.
Maybe fifty, sixty. You already spent ten dollars on this one. So we could double, we could double that.
I'm gonna mail you twenty dollars and double your campaign donations. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Stoops.
All right. Thank you, guys.
So I don't think, and I, I don't think Tub was here, uh, when, uh, Jason, Mr. Stoops, uh, said that technically it's kind of a partisan race, like a Republican and a Democrat would have that next to their name on the ballot. But a third party candidate wouldn't, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
So we're already being, uh, dilled a bad hand, but I think, uh, Mr. Stoops is gonna overcome that. He's about to roll that royal flush. I think he can get first. I'm saying, if you got twelve hundred votes before, that could be the most votes out of all of these guys. And, and you could win it and get the top of the ballot and show you got name recognition. If you did, when you decide to run for mayor, like imagine that. So I, I, yeah. And I, I wanna encourage you. I, I don't know if your, your commercial property allows your signs to be plastered all over them. But if they can, I would do it. You got, uh, that storefront.
Well, I have a frontage I can use for signage. Trust me on that.
Awesome. Um, and, uh, I wanna encourage you, uh, don't get, feel like you're getting bogged down. This is the stretch. Let's push for this. Um, this last push, get out there, door knock. But how can the Libertarian Party help you? Hopefully this is being shared. I don't know if national, I hadn't checked social media. Is there any way like we could, uh, phone call, text bank, people in your area, door knock? Can we get some, uh, Ohio representation? Libertarian part of Ohio, if you're listening to this. Get out there and door knock for this guy. And let's, let's really get out there and kick some tail.
Yeah, because I use any help I can take. Listen, I have not a clue what I'm doing. I've never, so this is the second time campaign. I lost the first time. So I made sure I did it right the first time. So I'm learning.
We all lost the first time.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, but, but, well, yeah, not yet. Uh, Marcus, anyways. What I'm hoping is Marcus sitting down with all of these candidates, listening to lessons learned, hopefully. Hopefully, uh, Mr. Stoops lessons learned will be all the things that worked out and helped him get elected. But I, I'm asking you like, well, what can we do if, if you don't have a donation link and we can't send you any money? How, how can we help? And I know that's tough. Do you want it? And I'll say it. Everyone go follow him on social media if it's available. Go to the link.
For sure.
Go to the link, share stuff, everything. Uh, and people in Ohio, if you're an hour out of town, what? And you wanna go door knock for Mr. Stoops and help out? Or if you're not in Ohio and you're willing to text bank or make phone calls. Is there a way people can get ahold of you and say, hey, send me ten phone numbers you want me to call and they'll call on your behalf?
I got a Facebook page is the best way. Like I say, I use like, my Facebook page, my main social media page for the push. Like I said, I think the, uh, webpage Marcus just shared there has a link to the Facebook page, but if not, it's Jason Stoops. Um, my face, so political page in Ohio. So that should be hard to find, I think. I hope.
Well, I've, after this, I'll definitely be following you and I, if, uh, I get time, I'll ask you, hey, you got ten phone numbers you want me to call for you. So.
Oh, sweet. Thank you.
No problem.
Hold on, I'm pulling the Facebook page right now. Standby.
Yeah, there's two of them, my personal and a political one. One's spicier than the other.
The one of them.
Everybody likes spicy and separate tub. So.
One of those pages.
I texted him a thing. Oh, I'll talk to him. Never mind. I, I, that thing I mentioned to you earlier today. I can't pull it up right now. If I could pull it up, I would, but.
So everybody go to that, uh, everybody watching this, go to that link. Uh, I, I don't know. We'll share it or whatever. Maybe we'll, it'll be in the comments of this video.
It, it was on the, uh, promo for the page. We, we linked to man, the Black Powder on Facebook. That's our most popular. I wanna, uh, uh, congratulate Tub and Eric. We got back to a million people coming to our page. Cause Facebook's been, uh, toning us down a little bit. We were at, uh, two to four million a month. And now we're only like two fifty to five hundred a month. And it's, it's been tough spreading the message of liberty. But this is why we have people like Jason Stoops on here who stepped up to the podium and presented himself. Um, uh, hold on a second. I'm posting what I have to post, bro.
Who are you talking to?
That's what it is.
Like you're arguing with yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ryan, yeah. Oh, you can't see this. Ryan is talking a bunch of horse plop. I'm posting what I have.
Anyways, Jason.
Tools on hand.
At one, once you're in office, Jason, we.
You didn't have to.
Permission to come back on and troll us as an elected libertarian. Anytime, just get in the comment section and just throw shade.
But that's what, uh, uh, this podcast is all about. And I wanna.
Throw shade?
Yeah, that too. But you know, this is the moment that I very much dislike in the podcast every Thursday where I have to thank Tub and Eric for their candidacy and stepping up to the plate and actually putting themselves out there for the public to view. And specifically for Tub, that's, that's kind of wild. That's a, that's a lot for the public to deal with.
It is.
Oh, that's funny.
But, oh, see, I was gonna joke in a way that I shouldn't have to look right there. I didn't. I didn't say.
You know, it's weird.
I didn't say anything about your mama. I didn't say nothing about your mama right now.
I would love that. I gotta be honest with you. I'm all about jokes because I think humans connect through laughter and food. Uh, more than anything else. So those two things. And that's why we were talking about barbecue earlier. And I had the suggestion of food trucks because that's how we can wrap our arms around each other like, oh, that was some good ass grub, bro. Or dude, that was a funny joke. Cause when I think of funny jokes, I think of Tub's face.
Look, so, so you think of funny jokes, but you just don't know any.
I was gonna, and I don't wanna get too, uh, religious here, but Jesus said the example, you gotta break bread, right? That is.
Yeah, that's for real.
And there's some humor in the way.
Because I broke in bread with, and I broke in bread with seasonless people and I smiled in their face as I was eating their unseasoned food.
You didn't share. Listen, I'm pretty sure, that'd be like, Mr. Stoops didn't come on for this. This, this was not what he was like, hey.
He, he signed up for whatever we brought him tonight.
Marcus, uh.
Thing about being a libertarian.
Need the wrap it up box right here. Go ahead.
Wrap it up, B.
We need somebody behind the scenes to.
Well, we'll give you the last statement and then we'll end with our little slogan that we always end with. So what do you have to tell the people of Wilmington and America about your candidacy and what you, your vision?
Well, if you're in Wilmington, vote Stoops. We gotta change things. We need transparency back in government. We gotta quit wasting money. The people need to take the power back. We're just being told what to do and being led along. And like you've said earlier, it can start at home. And they argue about the big federal stuff. Let's talk about our own backyard, our own for your, and our main street. We need to start at home. The issues can be, is all we can make in a better country.
That's worth.
There you go.
Anybody else?
Nah, that was it. That was good to go.
I wanna thank Jason for coming on and dealing with, uh, the two, two other people that I have to deal with on a weekly basis. Um, to my detriment. And, um, this has been the.
Now, Eric, is he gonna do to you what he does to me? He'll randomly send you texts like, dude, I love you. I love you.
I'm sorry. No, no, he doesn't do that. I guess, I guess I need to disappear every now and then and make them.
I don't know if Eric was raised by boomers, but boomers were tough love. You wanna beat down a person.
My parents are your age. I'm just kidding.
Listen, I've heard about his dad. He did. He got, he got treated that way. That's how that went down.
But I, I, I thank you both, Tub and Eric, and I love you like brothers, even though, um, you are what you are.
I've seen how you treat your family. Don't love me like a brother.
Jason, um, I look forward to talking to you in a few months, uh, as a council person. You know, because I'm from California, I have to say person and not man. You know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna set, upset any people in the fifth largest economy in the world. So with that, with that being said, thank you to my father. Um, you know, he was a deacon at, um, in, in the church and he made me who I am. And it was.
Know your dad.
Yeah, that too. And, and with Tub's horse malarkey, I think I hit all my pivotal, uh, moments and terms that I had to do tonight. But, um, as we always say when we end the Black Powder Podcast, live free or die. This is the Black Powder Podcast, coming at you live and direct. Your salty tears season my life. It's the Black Powder Podcast.